Okay, can we call this back to order, please? Let's go, folks. The sooner we can get together, we can get out of here. I don't get one. All these years being chairman, I don't get one. You lost yours? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this back to order. So if we can please have everyone seated and bring everything to a mild roar. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask, is anybody here who would like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Joe Cubic. I'm a lawyer with Harlow Adams and Friedman in Milford, Connecticut, and I reside at 1350 James Farm Road. And first of all, I'm not going to speak tonight, I'm just going to submit some petitions. But there was at least over -- there was over 50 people in this room earlier today, I think it's close to that now. All those in opposition to this application, please raise your hand. All of them except the applicant. So I'm going to submit two documents. First is what's known as a protest petition. I'll submit the original first, and then two copies, so you can review it. And a protest petition states that when there's a zone change, and you've got the owners of more than 20 percent of the real property located within the 500-foot buffer around the subject property, the zoning commission must vote in a supermajority to approve a zone change, 2/3. So in this case, with a five-member panel, you need four out of five votes for a zone change. So in that packet of the protest petition, just to help you, is the signatures of many people that own property within the 500-foot buffer of around 795 James Farm Road. Also attached is a list of the current owners, and that's more accurate than even the assessor's records. And also attached are two maps from the tax assessor's office showing -- first map showing, it looks like a cloud, but it's the 500-foot buffer around 795 James Farm Road. And there's also a map showing the actual parcels that are -- that consist of those parcels within the cloud. Some parcels within 500-foot only have maybe a few square feet, others, the whole parcel's within the 500 square feet. So we contend that based upon Connecticut general statutes and zoning regulations, that we need a four vote, affirmative vote, to approve the zone change in this matter. Second matter is a verified pleading. This is pursuant to Connecticut general statute, section 22A 19. It's the environmental statute. And I'm submitting this on behalf of Judith Kermey, Kathleen Martinez, my clients, and Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford, Inc. And what this states, this petition provides, it's verified pleading, signed by my clients, and pursuant to statute, you must take into account environmental concerns raised by us in your decision-making process. I'd like to submit this. Now, I just want to make sure I understand, it was our understanding coming here tonight, that myself and attorney Kevin Kelly, Tom Cotter is filling in for him tonight. Kevin represents the town of Stratford, where we'll be given the chance to present our expert witnesses and our legal arguments on March 28, 2018. Is that, that's my understanding, is that correct?
That is correct. Just, I just want to double-check the date in March, because the zoning commission did adopt a new schedule, changing from Tuesdays to Wednesdays. So I just want to make sure that we have the date right. The 28th, March 28th.
March 28th is the next hearing day. So I'm not going to speak anymore. I'd like to invite the members of the public up. What the commission members, I'm sure, would appreciate is that we not say the same thing over and over and over. If you hear that somebody's already said what you wanted to say, say, "I concur with other speakers," and state your name and address for the record, of course. And so this will go a lot smoother, I think, and it's fair to the commission as well. So I'd like to, I guess you can call up the first speakers.
Okay. Obviously, one at a time. I'd like to, anyone who would like to speak in opposition, please step forward and state your name and address.
And I'm the human mic, I'm the mic holder. Hi, good evening. I'm Robert Smith, 135 Pepper Ridge Circle in Stratford, Connecticut. I'd like to talk about James Farms Road. And the next time I'm here, but they should be in the file, I have pictures of a car that plowed into the back of a bus. And I submitted them to the committee, and I'm sure they're here. What I'd like to talk about, which we don't talk about here, are the peak hours of traffic. And we also don't talk about the fact that the bus use of James Farms Road. Now, there aren't any roads to go back and forth and twist around and whatever. You have James Farms Road, which comes down, and the buses from Flood and from D. Grammar School. They stop, the children get on, the cars are behind them, they go down the highway, turn around, and they come back the other way. Now, during that time, there's people going to work, there's people going to Lockheed, there's people going to other places. It's a very congested highway. I'm retired, I won't use it to go to Shelton until 9 o'clock. From 7 till 9, that road and those buses that stop, and what happens when a bus stops? All the traffic behind it stops. Has that been brought into consideration? Absolutely not. We're talking about traffic that flows through, well, it's eight cars or whatever. What happens when the buses are there? How long does it take a car to go from point A to point B? Now, we haven't considered that at all. It's a two-lane highway, this is only going to make it worse. We're taking the safety of all of our children, and the safety of the people there, but especially the kids, who are getting onto buses, and we are adding traffic during the time when people go to work and when they come back. So if you talk about a condition where we're going to take a building, where there's going to be over 100 cars, and we're going to put it on a two-lane highway, where we already have traffic problems, we have safety problems with our schools and whatever, we're sending a message to all the parents, to all the children there, that we really don't care. We really don't care. Those schools were there before this affordable housing thing came in. Now, the schools are what we have to take care of, the kids are what we have to take care of. And we're not doing that. We're disregarding that. If we have to put affordable housing in, there's other places to go. But we talked about the fire department, and we talked about the schools. The schools are there. What are you going to do about the safety of the schools and the buses? There's nothing that can be done. Except reject this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you. Hello, thank you for staying late to hearing our concerns.
Can we just get your name and address for the record?
Deborah Cohen, C-O-E-N-E-N, it's D-E-B-R-A, 690 Peters Lane. Okay, I hope this shows that it's not just the wildlife, or the digging, or the noise, or the construction. I'm opposed to any development. This is massive in our eco-sensitive North End. I'm sure we're R1 because of this wetland, water course, fragile area. We've always been R1 for a reason. Developers should have no right or reason to change our zoning status by saying the town is not meeting a 10 percent threshold for affordable housing. Success Village and Stony Brook Village do fall in the affordable housing threshold, the town needs to, if so, the town needs to pursue that change and that glitch in the law. 116 units in an already compromised area is not acceptable. Build it somewhere else. And on this land, build houses with one-acre lots, keeping with the way this area was zoned. Because you don't live here, here's some 23-year experience of living around Roosevelt Forest. If you drive down James Farm Road and don't live around Roosevelt Forest, you wouldn't know it's already difficult to live here. The topographic map that I looked at showed the proposed development about 200-foot elevation. Tonight, I heard 223 to 245. My property shows it's about 150 feet. I'm directly downhill from this proposed site. I'm concerned about flooding. We're living on a moat, surrounded by water and wetlands. The snowmelt and the spring and heavy rain floods our property every year, brings rain into our basement and garage. My husband and I have dug trenches in our yard to divert the water away from the house. Approximately 20 years ago, we looked at an aerial view map of our property, which I have here, we obtained from the town hall. My husband said the wetlands have grown and increased every year since this town picture was taken. And so probably 10 or 15 years ago, we hired Morgan Cauley and to fly over our house and take aerial photos of our wetlands surrounding our property. I've brought those two pictures here with me, and I'd like to submit them into evidence. The dark black areas show the water and wetlands surrounding our property. And today, we took two more, which show, you know, how much it's really grown. Thank you. And these two come today. The water now envelops us after 23 years on three sides of our house. Our lawn is soaking wet, it's spongy, you can hear the water raging from the brooks and property all around us. Water is not only seeping into our home, but we have extremely high water marks on our foundation. Not only is the water come in with the heavy rain, it seeps up from under the ground. We're surrounded by water in the North End. Beaver Dam, Cemetery Brook, Cemetery Pond, Cook's Pond, Cranberry Pond, lots of ponds, streams, and lakes. If you walk past Roosevelt Forest Park and hike the forest right past the shooting range, you will see a lot of streams, brooks, and waterways you'll have to navigate. This is why we're R1 and always have been. I'm concerned with my septic as well. We routinely have it emptied. I've had plenty of servicemen remove the septic cover and say they have never seen such underground water activity. It rages also in our septic under the ground. It's unusual, and I always reassure the person, it's been like that the whole time we've lived here. I now wait till August or September, when the flow slows a bit, to have it serviced. Number three, in 2013, my husband lie on the basement floor and waterproof the entire perimeter inside where the water was seeping through. He also scraped our entire house and four-car garage of the green mold and algae that coats everything. He repaired and replaced any damaged shingles, and he finished by staining the entire lot. By 2014, my husband was experiencing difficulty breathing, worsening coiff, and unexplained chest pain. He was worked up with a cat and pet scan for cancer, and had lung surgery in July 2014 by Dr. DeMayo at St. V's. He had a partial lobectomy, removing a portion of his right upper lobe lung. And as it turned out, it was not cancer, it was Aspergillus, a fungal infection. Although he wore a mask, he apparently inhaled some fungal spores that grew. Aspergillus can be caused by different things, but we will always feel Jeff suffered this from the water and mold we deal with, living in and around this wet area. The shortness of breath has affected his way of life, and he still has nerve damage and numbness at the surgical site, and has to use an inhaler now, daily. I'm worried our well will be further contaminated. In 2017, at the end of last year, we did a water test with complete environment testing on Loopy's Drive in Stratford. Came back, our well water was not potable, or not drinkable. A retest showed the same. Because winter was upon us, I decided to wait to have it chlorinated. We've recently replaced a well pump. The well line 20 to 40 feet underground had a leak, and it was our responsibility to dig it up, to bury it. Heath Water Company is not responsible for doing that, and you have to take that on or pay someone yourself to do it. So 20 to 40 feet, my husband and I, you know, dug up along the new pipe, and we buried it in the lawn. So at the end of winter, we didn't really want to incur anything happening or anything getting frozen. So we're still, we're still having to have Greco and Haynes come. As soon as the weather gets a little warmer, they're going to chlorinate our well, and this is very troubling. We're not sure what the result will be, and they've assured us that, you know, they're not responsible for the well water. It's possible it won't work. So imagine, in this day and age, since the summer, I'm not drinking our well water. I boil a lobster pot of water almost daily for our cats and dogs, and I buy gallons and gallons of bottled water for us to drink and cook with. So, you know, I had more, but I'm not going to go on them, and I'll let somebody else talk. We have wood ducks, hundreds of them, that come every year from February to April, before they go north. And they, unlike mallards and Canada geese, wood ducks do not populate any area where people are. They stay hidden out of sight, and if you walk near them, they'll take off. We also have the protected box turtle in our yard, the female eggs, eggs in our gravel driveway by digging holes, and then covering the eggs. So please keep our residential one status. Do not allow anything this big to be built. You know, if they build houses, we're still going to be affected by houses being built in this fragile area, but I think everybody could handle that better. And this water problem, my husband says, is getting worse, and this project will definitely exacerbate it. And the last thing I just want to point out is, a few years back, I don't know what year, we watched, we're at the last house before you enter the forest, we watched the Pruitt's house burn down. I was on my way home from work between 5:00 and 7:00 PM, and I heard a loud lightning strike on Main Street Putney, loud enough to turn the radio down. And when I got on Peters Lane, I smelled smoke. And when I got to near the end of Peters Lane, I saw their house on fire. So I pulled into Marcel Briton's property. There was a fire truck in front of Merrill's house, a big one, and they were waving me back. It wasn't wide enough for me to even pass to go home. So I pulled in the Britons driveway, and I sat there, and I just watched. And I couldn't understand for the longest time why no water was being put on the house, it was just burning. And it probably took 15 minutes to 30 minutes, and then it dawned on me. Here came a little pumper truck down the street, and a fella throwing the hose off the back. And it was probably close to a half an hour before they put water. And you can ask the homeowners, but I bet they were out for a couple, few years. And the same thing happened on North Peters Lane, on the other side of the forest, where a house there, you know, was engulfed. So this is the price we pay to live in that area, and we accept it. But this is just monstrosity, and it just doesn't belong there. Thanks for your time and for staying late tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition?
Hello, I'm Pam Gelder, and I have lived on Chapel Street for about 28 years. And this is just a monstrosity. First of all, I feel that what went on tonight with the discussion of all the various factors involved is almost an insult to our intelligence. Because the attorney who spoke first said that this is just a hypothetical project, that what he really is trying to do for his client is to change the zoning. And I feel that once that zoning is changed, they're going to pass this property off to somebody else and make a lot of money on it. But we, the people of the town, are going to be stuck with that kind of a zoning change in our quiet little neighborhood. Now, I live on Chapel Street, and to back up what this lady was saying, we wanted to get a gas furnace. Couldn't do it. They can't bring gas into our house because the street is so filled with ledge. My backyard also floods with the heavy rain we've had in the past week. I have to go out in boots to feed the birds. The whole backyard is filled with water. Now, they mentioned that they have to bring the water up either Chapel Street or Orin Oak Lane. And my question is, we just got sewers on Chapel Street in the past, I don't know, five years or so. And how are they planning on getting it over the bridge? The bridge of the Merritt Parkway? If they came up Chapel Street? You know, I just can't see where they're going to bring it across. So to bring it up Orin Oak would be a major undertaking. And I would like to know how much the taxpayers are going to be held responsible for bringing water and all the various things that they need. And I agree with the people that said, the traffic is crazy in the morning. I'm now semi-retired, but I know that when I was teaching, to go down Main Street to get to the light by Main Street and 110, sometimes the traffic backs all the way up to Chapel Street. The light is, you only get three or four cars through. And when they put in the Cut Spring Road development, it got quite busy. And I can't imagine all these cars that are going to come from here. And to say that they're having one and a half parking spaces for each apartment, even one-bedroom apartments, you're going to get young couples. Young couples have two cars. So there should be at least as many parking spaces for that many people, 116 times two is 232. And if anybody ever want to have guests over, where are they going to be? Parking on the neighbor's property, along James Farm Road? The road is already a problem in terms of traffic. And as everyone mentioned, the Armstrong Road, where the, someone is developing one of those kind of rundown houses there. And just have the workers there, they have to have cones and everything. You can hardly get two decent-sized cars through there now. So there are so many reasons where this has to be rejected. So I'm hoping that you take all the various things into consideration, and leave this neighborhood, decent neighborhood that it is. People worked hard to have a home with one-acre zoning, and to have a group come in here just for profit to destroy a neighborhood, so they can walk away and have a fat bag of coins and go someplace else. I found it interesting that in the other two projects that came before this, people stood up and said, "I'm here from, I live on such and such a street." None of these people that spoke on this project could say, "I live in this neighborhood, I live in Stratford." They don't, they don't care. I bet if this project was going in their neighborhood, they would have a lot to say. So my thought is, reject it.
Pam Goodpastor, I live in 5375 Main Street, Putney, across from the White Oak Baptist Church. Pam, Goodpastor, G-O-O-D-P-A-S-T-E-R. I got a brand-new golden retriever a year ago, and I go to Roosevelt Forest every day almost to walk. And I just, it's just a beautiful part of this town. It's just a lovely thing to have. And I don't think I ever appreciated the people in the neighborhood that are going to be suffering from this project. You talk about Armstrong, and I go to Stop &amp; Shop, so Armstrong and that particular road, Daniel's Farm, is just terrible completely. But the other thing that's terrible is coming out of Peters Lane, and coming out from Roosevelt Forest, and trying to get out onto James Farm Road. All those parking lots, all those spaces, I guarantee they're going to fill them with cars. This is just too much traffic. And it's too much traffic coming in and out of that part of town. So I appreciate the people that live around Roosevelt Forest and that allow me to come in every day, and I hope you don't make it harder on them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Merrill Pruitt, 575 Peters Lane, Stratford. I wasn't going to speak formally tonight for the Concerned Citizens Group, so I'm going to do that on March 28, because I do represent over 500 people that live in the North End, and that we are very concerned about this application. But I had to speak out tonight, because I heard, I heard someone say something about, "Oh, I can't respond to a theoretical example of fire trucks responding, or EMS responding." Well, you heard my name earlier, I didn't know she was going to mention me and my fire, but I had a lightning strike in 2002. It was a beautiful sunny day, there wasn't a cloud in the sky, and all of a sudden, lightning struck. It struck the side of my house, and it went immediately into the electrical panel box in the basement, in the wall. My son was 10-years-old at the time, he had a friend over. We had all been to Hammond asset beach, it was a beautiful day in April. And it took quite some time to get the fire trucks there. I won't go into a lot of detail about that. I'm very supportive of the fire department and all the people in it. And I know that there were some reasons for that. It could have been my southern accent, I'm not sure. But for some reason, they thought that when I called in, I said that I had set my husband on fire. And it took some while to clarify that and get the fire trucks on the way. And the first fire truck came and went to the wrong address, and I could see it up the road. That took a while. And he got down to my area, and yes, the pumping of the water, that was a big issue. So it was 15 minutes to a half hour just to get the water flowing to fight the fire. And that length of time, and the amount of time that it took to get started fighting that fire, half the house was already gone. And that's what happens. Structural damage happens really, really fast with a hot, burning fire. And I just wanted to mention that, because it's not theoretical, it is true, and it really happened. That's a high area for lightning strikes. Chapel School has been struck twice. There have been other issues that happened up there with lightning. And I do want to say that one of the other comments, I believe I wrote down something about, that there was only a few people's safety that would be of concern. But as the firemen pointed out when they were there fighting my fire, there were two fires that started in the forest next to my house because of the lightning strike. So they couldn't even fight those fires until they got my house under control. And it was quite some time before they were able to do that. And it required other fire trucks to come from Milford and other areas to come to fight that fire. And to concentrate on the house, as well as take care of the fire in the forest that had started. Three fires in the forest had started. So if you get a fire happening in Roosevelt Forest, and this is where this apartment complex is decided to be, you're looking at all the North Peters Lane, all these houses all around, Harvest Ridge, the new development on the other side that has opened up just recently. So let me just mention some of what I am researching and going to bring forward as documentation at March 28 meeting, but I will mention to you now, that based on response time, structural damage increases from a fire, and for a person that has had a heart attack, it can make a difference of whether the person survives or not. To put this in perspective, there's a response time chart that the EMS follows, if the percentage of person's chances of survival. One minute, if they get there in one minute, it's 90 percent. Two minutes, it's 80 percent. And it continues down, four minutes, 60 percent. Seven minutes, 30 percent. Eight minutes, 20 percent. Nine minutes, 10 percent. And if it's 10 minutes, it's 10 percent of possible chance of survival, or none at all. So the EMS department has figures that go back from 2014, showing the response time from downtown as five minutes, 18 seconds, without traffic, to get to the North End. But this also depends on where the emergency vehicles begin their journey, the time of day, night, and weekends. That also changes response time, and depends on where they, it depends on where they originate. It could add at least one to eight minutes from downtown, and 15 to 20 minutes to come from Bridgeport. If James Farm Road is closed to one-lane traffic for up to six months during construction of something like this massive apartment building, this could have a huge impact on emergency response time. And I don't know if y'all know this, but the EMS department also has records about the North End, that a majority of calls come from the North End. And in 2011, they put a temporary ambulance as a trial basis at the Orin Oak Fire Department. That ambulance is still there today, because they need that extra response time. So I will provide documentation on March 28 about all these things that I'm talking about tonight. talking about tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition?
Oh, we've got one. She beat you.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Sikelski Martinez, and I live at 800 James Farm Road. I live directly across the street from this proposed project that we were talking about. This land across the street, obviously, the gentleman, the engineer that was giving you the information, he talks an awful, awful lot about the water, the water, all of these pumps and supports to make the water flow better. It is a gigantic water issue there, the way that the flow that the land is. There's so much water around. It bleeds out from my yard into the street and goes across the street into the land across where we're talking about this project. This is a round hole with a square peg. It does not complement, as you said, Mr. Hendrick, it does not complement our area at all. And there's, there's, on the other side of what they're trying to propose, I think that there's just, they're trying to make this so commercial and fill their pockets and not take the consideration of the residents and what we've put in, what we've invested, who we are, just throw this into the land and build it up. There's so much erosion, flow, wildlife, and what everybody else has talked about. I disagree with putting this project up. I don't want it. I think that there's other opportunities for this land to grow in a very positive way for all of Stratford and even for Connecticut. We have a beautiful Roosevelt Forest there that could be added on to. There are, there are also asbestos issues across the street of what was used to be there. So there's, like I said, it's a round hole with a square peg. I do not believe that this is something that belongs in this part of Stratford, and I hope that you reject it.
Sybil Freeman, 170 Brookside Drive. I don't live in that neighborhood or near it. My neighborhood's pretty dense, and it's very nice to drive up to that neighborhood, to get to Roosevelt Park, to go up beyond into the shopping area beyond that. It's, you don't have to put buildings on every square inch of land in the town. It's nice to have an area that's a little bit open, sunny and green. Another thing I wanted to bring up was, what you have today may not be what you have in 15 years. Brookside Drive describes where I live. And when I moved there, we didn't think about raising the house or having floods, but things have changed in 15 years. And I think within the next 15 years, more things are going to change. The water is rising, and the problems they have now may be a bit worse down the road. I heard the threat loud and clear in the beginning of the presentation tonight, "You will approve this or the courts will." And I live in the neighborhood with Popeyes, and I'm still resenting the fact that that's the last thing we needed or wanted, and we have to live with it. So that's my thing.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other speakers? What I'm going to do is invite everybody back on the 28th after this one speaker.
Thank you. You'll allow one. I'll be quick.
Okay, we still have other work that we need to get done before the 11 o'clock hour. So if you could just bear with us, and anybody else who'd want to come back on the 28th, you're more than welcome to.
Okay. Sandy Higgs, and I live at 280 James Farm Road. I just want to say, I agree totally with everything that everyone here has said. I just wanted to add one more thing about the transportation. People, when, at rush hour, people come down from the corporate parks in Shelton. James Farm Road is a crossway for people to bypass all the Main Street traffic that comes out from Sikorsky. So they either go down, they come down from Shelton, come across through that little bog right, area right there. They either go down Armstrong, not Armstrong, I'm sorry, Oranoke, or they go all the way up to Chapel Street, go down Chapel Street, and then come around again. So I just wanted to say that it's not just our traffic, it's also Shelton's traffic. People are trying to get to the merit, and they're going to take any back road that they can. Thank you.
Thank you. For those that do want to come back on the 28th, we will continue with the public speaking part, then the experts from the opposition will take over, okay? At this point, I need a motion to continue this public hearing by Mr. Solhavy, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, that will conclude this portion of the meeting. Just close, adjourn the public hearing part? Yes. John?
Yes, sir.
Do we?
I know we've made a motion to leave this open. We adjourn the public hearing. No, no, you've made a motion to leave this open. So this particular petition, which is fine. So you can adjourn tonight's public hearing.
Okay.
And this will be on the agenda for the next public hearing.
And?
Yes, this is, yeah, now you're going to open the administrative session.
Right.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hendrick.
Motion to take text amendments, text amendments that bill 5-104 East Main Street, text amendment 50-104 East Main Street off the table.
Just the two of them?
Four.
All four of them? Okay. A motion by Mr. Hendrick to take four text amendments off the table. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Manis?
There's two text amendments and two special cases.
Okay, so we need the two text amendments first.
All four. Please, regarding the erst但
John, we can take all four together?
You can take all four together. But you can, if you're
Wait, we know it all separately.
Right, exactly. So we just take all off the table.
Okay, so we have a second by Ms. Manis. Right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Okay. Mr. Hendrick.
Motion to approve erst但 properties, special case, 10.2.2 regarding commercial ally and then a big zone.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. Any discussion on the matter? Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only discussion I want to make is that this had been before me prior to, when I was on the Planning Commission, and I'll just reiterate the same points that I had before, was that it seems fair, consistent and logical that this type of amendment would be put through. It doesn't change the overall height of the building, it just clarifies it and gives more flexibility to anybody that would be developing the building. So I urge your adoption.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hendrick.
Motion approved, 50-104 East Main Street and 25-65 Sydney Street, erst但 properties, Inc., special case
Approval to construct 121,000 square-foot self-storage facility in MA zone.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hendrick. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Manis. All those in, oop, any discussion on the matter? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hendrick.
Text amendment, erst但 properties, Inc., create new 7.1.17, 10.2.16, 16.6.53, and to amend 16.79 regarding commercial signs.
I see a second.
Second.
By Ms. Manis. Any further, any discussion on the matter?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hendrick.
Along with that, I would like to include in the text that any non-I-95 signs that might be moved would maintain the same height from, what do you call it? Is it from sea level? I mean, there's
Ground zero?
It's usually from the average grade on all sides.
But is there an elevation for?
I mean, not for, not that I know of for billboards, but
I mean, just, I mean, but everything is like when you do a survey, you got 16.5, you know, so not to, not to go above that. I mean, would you be happy with the average grade on the existing site? I just don't want somebody coming in and putting a pile of dirt and putting a sign on top of it.
I think you could probably do average grade and from
Thank you. I think you could probably do average grade from a, with a maybe 10 or 15-foot radius. You know, that might prevent from someone just putting a big pile of dirt. I don't know. You might have to make the radius larger. You know, I've been thinking about a way to include that since you mentioned it, and I still haven't been able to come up with something that I think that would take care of.
I mean, I think if we did a surveyed height elevation, not to go above the surveyed height elevation of the existing, of the existing sign.
Yeah, I think that would be almost the better way to do it and say that, you know, there can be no increase in height on, so your initial language was, any, any commercial sign that is not located along I-95, we'd have to define that as well. Cannot increase in, in current elevation from the site.
So I would, all right, so I'd say that the, I'd like to make amendment to say that this would include any non-I-95 sign, not to increase the height requirement above the surveyed height of the existing sign. And that would be my, I'd like to make a, offer an amendment. I guess I would have to make an amendment to do that, or offer it as a friendly amendment.
Okay, Linda, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Yes?
I just wanted to clarify, how would we determine what a non-I-95 sign it's, would be? Is it a distance of 1,000 feet from I-95, or is it visibility? Is it visible from I-95? I just want to make sure that we're buttoning it up.
Well, the text said adjacent to I-95, so any non-adjacent?
So if the property does not abut I-95?
If the property does not abut I-95.
That's still acceptable, Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on the? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hendrick.
50-104 East Main Street and 25-65 Sydney Street, erst但 properties incorporated, special case and site plan review, approval to relocate a commercial sign in MA zone, and make a motion to approve based on the surveys provided.
I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick. I have a second by Mr. Vacola. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You guys mind if I just blow through these? 570, 577 Holly Lane. Hopefully, I'm a little more accurate than John Belushi was when he was on the roll. 577 Holly Lane, petition of par-one development LLC, oh, actually, motion to take 577 Holly Lane, all, I think just two or?
Just two.
Two petitions off the table.
I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Mr. Hendrick.
Mr. Chairman, 57, motion approved, yeah, motion to approve 577 Holly Lane, petition of par-one development LLC, special case and site plan review, approval to establish a full-service restaurant in a CF zone.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Ms. Manis. Any further discussion on the matter? Mr. Hendrick.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like that approval to include all the stipulations laid out during the public hearing from Mr. Hibansky.
Okay. And to include the sidewalk or the sidewalk and the
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk from across
I'll need some clarification on that, just because I wasn't exactly sure. We might want to pull out the map just so I can be clear as to where that sidewalk needs to go. Sorry to put things up.
And is that a state road? And do we have jurisdiction over crosswalking a state road?
I don't think it's a state road.
It's ours, right?
No, it's a state road, it's state traffic.
Yeah.
No, but isn't that ours? Because we cover
Holly Lane?
Holly Lane.
I don't think Holly Lane is a state
No, it's ours. Half's ours, half's Trumbull's.
Yeah, half Trumbull, half ours.
It could always be stipulated, and if DOT, if it was a state-owned highway, DOT could say no, and then they would come back and they'd have to modify the approval. So
Well, that's the applicant
We only, we only have to go up to the yellow line.
That's the applicant's responsibility.
Right. I'm pretty sure that Holly Lane is not a state road. I think you're right, Mr. Vacola, that it's, part of it is within the Stratford jurisdiction and part of it's in Trumbull.
Entrance to the diner?
Yeah, but the entrance to the diner itself. The entrance to the diner is, yes, and my guess is that it's right here on the corner.
It would be a sidewalk going from the entrance to the diner, pretty much heading west towards this driveway.
Okay.
And if
It's easier from the map.
Right. And if, and a sidewalk also continuing in front of this over to the actual entrance, which I believe is right here.
And not going further past the sidewalk.
Right, right.
So it's to install the sidewalks out of the entrance, heading south on Holly Lane.
Right.
Continuing across the entrance
Across the driveway entrance in front of the medical building, which is, I believe, over here.
By the sign.
Okay. Leading up to the actual entrance of the Holly Lane, Big Y.
Not cross, oh, sorry.
Okay, and at the entrance to the Holly Lane, Big Y, is where the crosswalk would go, and then across the street to Holly Lane.
Okay.
Allowing people from this side of the street to cross safely at a already pre-constructed push-button for a crosswalk.
So you may want to just restate that one more time.
Easy for me to say.
As an additional condition.
Store side, the sidewalk heading south on Holly Lane and crosswalk at the Big Y entrance.
Up to the Big Y entrance, yes. And then across from Holly Lane, across the street.
Is that acceptable? You reject?
Perfect.
I would accept as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Motion, and whoever seconded? Did somebody second that? Linda, you accept that also, Linda?
So the friendly amendment should include, the approval would include case requests from the public session, public forum, and riches
Sidewalk and crosswalk.
Sidewalk and crosswalk.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr.?
577 Holly Lane, petition of par-one development LLC, approval of a liquor location to establish a Class D restaurant, liquor permit for a full-service restaurant in a CF zone, and make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick. Do I have a second? Ms. Manis. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hendrick.
Motion to take 771-815 Barnum Ave. off the table.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman. 771-815 Barnum Ave. cutoff, petition of Marl Properties LLC, special case and site plan review, approval to modify existing conditions of approval for a self-storage facility in MA zone, and make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Solhavy. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hendrick?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 30, 2018 organizational meeting and the regular January 30, 2018 meeting.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number two, discussion, recommendation letter of council mayor to add planner position...
We just wanted to update the commission and let everybody know that the letter has been sent to the council clerk, and it should be put on the agenda, the next council, town council's agenda. In addition to that, the Planning Commission has also authored almost identical letter from their body to the town council as well.
I did see on the town council agenda last month, so I know they've received it. Good.
Okay, campsite plan review, 50 East Main Street, self-storage. Do we, we just need to approve that, or, or, yeah?
Were there any issues with it?
No, the only reason that application was left open to this month is because they were waiting for feedback from Mr. John Goucher. He sent an email today, and I think it was in their attorney knot's folder of exhibits, that he has been, he's satisfied with the proposed changes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve 50 East Main Street self-storage campsite plan review.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick. Do I have a second?
Aye.
By Ms. Manis. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Five zero. Zoning enforcement study, complaints, et cetera? Nothing?
No.
Nobody gotten it?
Not for me.
Accessory apartment applications? We have...
No applications.
None? Sediment and erosion control applications?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve 50 East Main Street self-storage sediment and erosion control application.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. Any discussion?
Mr. Hibansky, is there, does it meet all the criteria?
It does. I would recommend the standard conditions of approval for an erosion and sediment control application, which are basically, if it fails, they need to let us, they need to let us know and fix it immediately, and also, once the controls are in place, they'll notify the zoning enforcement officer so that he can inspect and verify that they've been done correctly.
Make or amend it to include Mr. Hibansky's recommendations?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve 577 Holly Lane full-service restaurant sediment and motion erosion control application.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick. Do I have a second? By Ms. Manis. All those in...
I would just ask Mr. Hibansky again if it meets all the criteria, and that my, my motion would include his standard stipulations.
Yes, it does meet all the, all the criteria.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve 1884 Main Street Tavern, expand outdoor seating.
Did you skip over planning projects deliberately?
Oh, sorry, I thought that was...
None?
Go right ahead, sir.
None.
Can you please just explain the 1884 Main Street? What's the request? Which? Go ahead.
Do you want me to work on the, to explain the planning stuff?
Yes.
We do have...
I didn't skip it intentionally, I just missed it.
Well, we have a couple of planning, large-scale planning projects that we're working on now. One is the Complete Streets. We received a $450,000 grant to push the final designs forward for Stratford Center. Very exciting. We are working on the RFP, and then getting all the documents, get ready to go out to bid to hire our engineering firm to push the project to construction plans, and hopefully wrap that up with permitting in the next year. The next project is the Coastal Resiliency Project, and that's basically looking to better protect the town from any climate-related events, storms, flooding, and we're hoping that if we get the town planner, that is going to be one of their primary objectives, is to make sure that we are implementing as many of the action items in that plan.
And that's it?
That's the update.
Number eight, Mr. Hendrick?
And I'll, just, I'll make the motion, then we can discuss. Motion to approve, and I'm not saying to approve it yet, but, motion to approve 1884 Main Street Tavern, who wants to expand their outdoor seating.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. Any discussion on the matter?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, from, from what I saw, they want to double their seating?
Yes, I, well, no, I think they just want to, you're right, they do want to double it.
One of the things, this was something that happened back when I was on zoning, six years ago, whatever. There were a lot of issues with the bar at the time. One of the things we did was to stipulate, because now I think most of those outdoor seedings are just, can done, be done administratively. We stipulated that they needed to come back for an approval to ensure that it didn't get out of control, and to make at least some, some control over it, so I would like to offer amendment that if we do approve this, that we make it a mandatory review in a one-year period.
Okay, and do we know if there's been any complaints or any trouble there?
I asked the zoning enforcement officer just to take a look, to see if there was any enforcement on the property. He said, and I quote, "Please be aware that over the past year, I have not received any complaints concerning the outdoor tables and chairs located at 1884 Main Street, otherwise known as Main Street Tavern."
Okay.
Okay. So, my...
Stipulation, or...
Well, yes, I would like to make, offer the friendly amendment that it include a mandatory one-year review. My motion would...
Motion by Mr. Hendrick to include his stipulation, or, any further discussion? Or who was, who seconded that? Alec Vacola? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then, Mr. Chairman, do we need to waive the rules to add Athletic Brewing, or is that an old?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry?
It did, it, that administrative request came in after we had already sent out our commissioner packets.
So, it'd make a motion to waive the rules to include Athletic Brewing's petition? What is it, application?
Motion by Mr. Hendrick.
Request.
Second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
I can give a quick overview. It's a new business in town, it's a non-alcoholic brewery that's specializing in these craft ales that seem to be the trend now. They are located tucked back down off of Long Beach Boulevard. They're requesting to have, if you see the site plan, two to three small, little food truck, food trucks to be located, so that they can offer food and other non-alcoholic items there on-site. It's been a historical practice for the town, or from the zoning office, to refer these to the zoning commission for final approval. We didn't have any issues based on where the, where the site's located, the hours of operation, the time and the season that they wanted to operate it, we had no concerns.
Would it make sense to make our approval pending Health Department review?
Absolutely, yeah, I think that you could do that.
That was gonna be my suggestion. Okay.
Well, I will take your suggestion. So, I'd make, I would make a motion to approve pending Health Department review.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Goal settings, Army Engine Plant? Nothing. Methadone Clinic? Nothing. Parking? Zip?
Let's see.
Whoop, hold on.
Well, these items were left over. I'm not sure if we want to discuss any new goal-setting goals that you folks have for the year. You may want to keep, remove these altogether. I was asked to leave these on the agenda, and I know we've kind of had some busy nights